Well, in that case, I this I have it as seven oh four. I will call this public or this. Uh, meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board to order uh roll call attendance, Bill Spalding?
Yes, present.
Uh, Kristen Weekly?
Present.
Theo Noel?
Present.
And myself is present as well. Uh, so in that case, I'll move on to item number two, approval of the meeting minutes from October twenty eighth. Does anyone have from the planning board have any comments of the they wish to to provide? So in that case, do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes minutes as presented?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Bill seconded by Theo roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, as well. Motion passes. So moving on to item number three, uh, which is the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street Public Hearing. So Attorney McGrail, my understanding is this one is you?
It is. Could I just have two seconds, Mr. Chair?
Uh, you I'm assuming you're talking to your engineer?
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
I mean, the the good news is, right, the agenda does publish the the meeting ID and the passcode.
And for that's the way Attorney McGrail got in.
Yeah, so. I mean. The only other thing we could do on the agenda would be to like. Have, you know, step by step instructions, you know? There or or make make the meeting ID and the passcode. Larger.
I did a quick search and I couldn't find anything saying what we should or shouldn't do. So I think we should just. Go by what we were talking about and not close anything, not vote anything that pertains to any public. Um, conversation or yeah. And I think unless Attorney McGrail, again, I think we're pretty good with. Where we are with Salem Street and the A and R, like you mentioned, we should be fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also texting Kevin York. He's having issues as well.
Got it.
Getting in, so.
The chair, even though it's posted, I have a couple of the uh. I have a couple of the neighbors um. Numbers, I'm gonna try to call them as well, just to give them a heads up on how to get it.
Okay. I I think that's fine for for now. Um, just let me know when you're.
You got it.
To proceed.
Yeah.
So while Attorney McGrail is doing that, I'll take the opportunity to go out of order. Does anyone from the planning board have an item not anticipated by the chair? Mr. Spalding?
Yes, um, well, I don't know, just in a big cleaning mode, we um hosted Friendsgiving this weekend and we're cleaning the house and doing stuff. So I did the same thing to my computer. And I noticed in my junk mail that I've had four and um reminders to do um the. Um, state. It went to my junk mail. But it was the state required review of open meeting laws. So I feel like we just did it a year ago because of things that have come up. But um, I just wanna make sure that you're all possibly checking your junk mail as well because the open meeting laws. Testing that you have to do, the whole. Yeah, I'm looking for the exact words of it now. Yeah, so it might be in your junk folder like it was in mine. So the first one I received was back, I think, in late August, early September. And then again, every couple of weeks, so I'll be doing that over the Thanksgiving break. I don't know if any other members had had that come up with them with theirs.
Uh, I have not seen that, but and I'm not aware of that requirement. So uh, if you could forward me a copy of whatever that. That isn't, I'm not sure if other members have the same.
What I'll do is I'll send it out to the entire board, including to Marissa, and I'll um make sure no one obviously re- replies to all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other members have any other items anticipated by the chair? That was a good one, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I have sort of two uh slightly big picture kinds of uh. Things that um now that we're through, I think a lot of the. Uh, you know, we're through the bylaw, we're through MBTA, we're through a uh ADUs um. Uh, thinking uh constructively about. Uh, like. A, looking at all at the waivers in this uh. Instance, like what are common, what maybe point to um some unnecessary kinds of things that. We might wanna um review and uh in the future or find uh maybe some ways of removing, um but also uh. Uh, if we do have like substantive questions about what they mean, um coming up with some common understanding and. Uh, maybe some common decisions about when to apply. Uh. Uh, when to accept a waiver on X, Y, or Z, and when when we wouldn't. Um, uh, I I think that that might be helpful uh just from a a knowledge building kind of perspective.
Theo, can I pause it for a second? Are you saying that you you maybe wanna schedule some time on the agenda for us as a board to review? Times when we would. Uh, or the types of waivers that we have historically accepted or not accepted, or are you talking about a review of the underlying? Rules and regulations that result in, I'll say, frequent flyer waivers?
Um, I think it's really the second. Um, uh, so that, right, maybe there's a way of being a little more effective if we can. Uh, remove the the need for those waivers if they're. Generally accepted or generally universal. Um, they may not be, but then um maybe there's. Uh, one way to. Slightly improve the process. Um, the the other big picture item, it is like um. Uh, yeah, what? Are there ways of making this more more effective a a process for the applicant for? The um and the abutters uh and for us in in cooperation with CONCOM and CBA. Um, just any anything we can do to help uh save our board time, applicants' time, even if it's resulting in a. A negative decision. I mean, you know, within within all the all the bounds and and wanting to do everything uh appropriately, but. Uh, the more effective we can be, the better. Um, and the the third big picture would be um. Uh, starting to like think through some of the the recommendations that show up in the the Housing Production Plan. Um, about what those those kinds of topics mean, and then being able to have some. Some uh good public forums about what what these mean um and what what they might look like. Um, so. Just. Um, so food for thought, and you're muted, Jim. Um, so.
Sorry, the last one you said basically thinking about the housing production?
Yeah.
So that goes into the the one that I I I wanted to. Give the board a heads up. I would like to put some as an agenda item for our twelve-nine meeting, um a placeholder to talk about. Planning efforts on a go-forward basis. Um, the housing production plan. Whether to include that in the the uh zoning map evaluation effort or have that as a separate thing. As well as the signage. Those are kind of the the three. General big picture items. So I'd like to include that as a. Agenda item for our twelve-nine meeting, so we can talk about that in a more substantive manner on the board and have that be an agenda item.
That's great.
And I know I've started doing some work and have talked to Marissa about. Um, a thinking about. A structure if we are interested as a board in proceeding with a rezoning. Concept that that I've mentioned a couple of times in these nine I've anticipated, but I wanna. Start actually progressing that and talking about it as a board, so we can come up with a process if we want to start engaging with that. So. That's that's an item I anticipate going to be on the that twelve-nine.
Excellent. Okay, great. Okay.
Um, any other items not anticipated by the chair?
I have one quick one. Uh, we had talked a couple of meetings ago about one ninety-seven Haunt Street and the tree protections. Um, I happened to drive by there earlier this week. Uh, it was at night, so I went by today during the day. Um, there's a fence, a privacy fence for that property along Nahant. And I felt like we had talked about as a board. And asked them to not put a privacy fence there. So I went back and looked at the meeting minutes and on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. They did give confirmation that no fence will be along the Haunt Street. It sounds like based on our conversations about tree protections, there's not a lot we can do at this point, but I thought I would bring it up just. So it's on the record and everyone on the board knows.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, it's deeply disappointing, but.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, not that surprising. Um. Uh, Mr. Noel?
To to that point, the the reason for uh. Not allowing a privacy fence was really visibility, right? Street visibility, road road visibility. Um, so does that is that like an argument for a future condition? Like, uh.
I think it was a condition as part of that subdivision approval.
Yeah, and the the meeting prior to the June twenty-seventh, when Matt brought up sort of the character of Nahant. And how a privacy fence would change things.
Yeah. Um, then then we have recourse, right? Um. This is a, this is a violation.
Um, I can't remember, and thank you, Kevin, for bringing this up, and. It's, it really is our job as a board the best we can to go by these properties and. Um, in the past, what we would do is we would almost assign a board member to go and check out that property. Here and there, like when we've had different projects that like on Prospect Street and a few others. Up in Druid and all that, that we knew there were some issues with. Abutters and land and different things going on with drainage as well as trees. Um. So. In this case. Um, I I opened my notes to see if there was something, so thank you, Kevin, but. I was wondering if it was something about sightlines and there's a lot of kids that walk to the high school or in the other direction to Galvin. And obviously, we know Nahant is supposed to be twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, and it's not always. But if it's an issue with that fence blocking any type of vision of. People walking on the sidewalk or people trying to drive out or into the um new driveway. I I I didn't see anything in my notes, but that that would be the trigger for me as well.
Yeah, I I didn't see anything in the meeting minutes or my notes about. Um, line sites. I actually went down the new driveway and then out. The fence is set back enough that I didn't really have visibility issues with turning out of there. Um, but what I what I saw was more Matt's comments about characterization of the street in the neighborhood.
Right.
Bill, in 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 the case of a, cuz I know the tree protection one is.
Mm-hmm.
Challenging because once the tree is damaged, you can't wave a magic wand and bring it back to life.
Right.
But from it for a fence. You can tell someone to take a fence down, right?
Right.
Enforcement, but I I'm just trying to remember, do we have a? An enforcement mechanism for some sort of non-conformance specifically to that like that to that effect?
And some sometimes we do, whether it's a surety or some type of um depending on the relationship with the contractor, the. How it's gone through the zoning board at Conservation Commission as well as our board. So um, we've gone in the past. And met with the homeowner or the contractor. And ask them to, how are you going to rectify this or change it when here is the, you know, we'd have the drawings, we'd have the information there with us. Um, we've had the building inspector go with us in the past. We've had. Members of the zoning board or Conservation Commission and and walk the site if needed. So that that's usually the second step. The first step is a letter, which we've already done for the tree. Um, and I think that's always the first best is to have a letter go through. Um, but as far as. Unfortunately, enforcement, we don't really have any enforcement mechanism. It needs to come from the building inspector. Or from town engineering. Um, and or DPW. This is just in my experience. It may not be one hundred percent correct. But we really don't have any enforcement power.
So I think the first the first. Step is probably for us to to write a letter.
Mm-hmm.
Denoting. Non-conformance with the the subdivision decision. Uh, and to start that process, so. Does anyone want to raise their hand in order to to? Draft a draft a letter for that?
I can.
Well, I can send the former letter in Word format to you, Kevin, if you'd like, since this was kind of. Um. Brought up by you, if that's fine.
Sure. Yeah. I can use that, and then Bill also or um Jim will send you a draft.
Okay, sounds good. Um, Marissa?
It says, um, sort of like a general idea, I, you know, much like. Enforcement mechanisms are incorporated into zoning bylaws. I believe there's a a way in which enforcement mechanisms can be incorporated into the planning board subdivision rules and regulations. So, um. You know, if if next year we wanted to talk about what some of those enforcement mechanisms might look like, we can model them off of what might be pre-existing already in the zoning bylaw. We could look to peer communities to see if they have any in place and and we can adopt them as a board. Um. Subdivision rules and regs are typically just, uh. They're typically just a policy of the planning board. I don't believe they have to go to a town meeting vote, so it's something a town meeting vote. So I believe, and anybody feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they can just be discussed upon and and adopted. By the board and then incorporated into.
Longer than a public, a public meeting. With my recollection.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't you start working on a letter uh to that effect, Kevin? I'm just trying to look at the conditions. I I don't know if. We should just, if there is a condition that's tied to that fence, we should make sure we reference it um one way or the other. So, um, okay, uh. Anything uh uh other items unanticipated before I uh try to. Uh, see if Attorney McGrail is ready to engage on the subdivision?
All good.
Okay. Uh, Attorney McGrail, are uh. Are you, have have you made the requisite calls you wanted to make before?
Yep, I'm all set. Yep.
Okay, so in that case, uh, I'll open the public hearing associated with one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem. Street subdivision. So my recollection, Attorney McGrail, is that the last time we connected and talked is that you were nearing. Uh, completion of the process with the ZBA as well as the Conservation Commission and that. Um, you had put together a draft list of conditions that you provided to this board and I've distributed. And so you wanted to come to them to this board today to talk about said draft conditions. And then I I don't believe we talked about when you anticipating a a final vote to be taken on it, but. You heard it. I think that we're challenged from a logistics perspective to do it tonight, but um. I I'll I'll turn it over to you to to discuss uh how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we we um. Uh, our schedule is we, I think we're anticipating that we will close out. Hopefully with a vote with the zoning board at their meeting on December ninth. I'm sorry, December tenth. And the um, I think the Conservation Commission. Is gonna be, I can tell you right now, um. December sixteenth. So it looks like it's gonna be a tenth and the sixteenth um. That we will, you know, be closing out with them. They they seem fine. Um, I think the. Um, with the plans. Um, so you know what our goal would be tonight, Mr. Chair, would to go over the draft decision uh conditions that I presented. We also wanna talk to the uh board about the mailbox location. There's a mailbox issue with the subdivision, and we wanna inform your. Um, board what we uh what we would like to do that with that. We've already talked to the zoning board and they're fine with that. Um, there will be some cleanup on the final plans. As I mentioned, we've got a a couple little changes from uh. From a lining on a wall perspective that one of the abutters requested, so we're gonna add that on to the plan. Rich Williams will add that on. So there'll be a final revision date on the plan, and then um that abutter also wanted some land additional landscaping put on. Uh, between one of the units and their property on Navalus Way, so we're gonna be doing that. Uh, as well. So it'll be probably a final plan with minor changes that we will be submitting. Uh, prior to the to the next meeting, which I believe for you is December ninth. Um, our goal would be. Um, to have um. Um, a vote that night and prior to that, assuming your your board is okay with that and okay with the conditions that. Um, the next step for that meeting in advance, I'd like to draft a um submit a draft decision. Uh, for the board to consider through the town planner. Um, to, you know, kinda have that in order. Um, so that's that's what I'd like to accomplish tonight, really to to go through the draft conditions, hopefully button those up, talk about the mailbox location. And then, as I mentioned, to go to December ninth and also I would probably like to give you an extension of time um. Till the end of January, right now you till the end of December. Um, even though it um hopefully will be anticipated that it will close up on the ninth in case we have a catastrophic event with the Zoom, which we all know can happen. Um, that you wouldn't be in a predicament that if you're gonna run out of time um and have a constructive approval. So if that's okay with you, I'd like to, I guess, start with the draft conditions.
So I I think that makes a ton of sense in terms of an order operation. So um, do you wanna pull it up or do you want me to do?
I can pull it up. Yeah, I might have to take notes if you have some comments on it. Um. So I need to be allowed to share. And if not, you can bring it up if that's easier.
Uh, bear with me for a second. Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay. Yep. So what what I've done, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I've I've um composed draft conditions. Based on prior decisions of your board, which are some typical ones that some of the members that have been through subdivisions will be familiar with. Uh, and then also I've incorporated the conditions that were requested by the town engineer. Uh, in his correspondence to your board, that I've I've put all of those in there. So if I may, I'll start with, you know, first, number one, the approval in associated votes, the board of binding on the applicant and its successes and assigns. So if the project or property is sold. Um, so thus the approval in any all conditions referenced herein and or on the plan shall not only be complied with by with with the applicant, but also the applicant's successes and assigns. Um, so that's number one, just to to make sure it's locked in. Number two is performance bond or surety. So is we have to do with subdivision. So the execution of a performance bond. Conditional approval contract or lender's guarantee of performance serving as surety. For the installation of all municipal services, which shall be completed in accordance with the applicable subdivision rules and regulations. Of the Wakefield Planning Board shall be accomplished and received by the board prior to endorsement of the My Law Plan set by the board. Said form of surety shall be recorded at the registry and when endorsed. Uh, in when the endorsed My Law Plan is recorded, so it has to be recorded at the same time, and. It has to be superior entitled to any mortgages relating to land within the subdivision. So the reason we do that is, you know, if my client has a mortgage on the property, um, and. The surety is recorded after the mortgage. If the mortgage were ever foreclosed, it would wipe out your surety. So we want any lender to say, yeah, we agree, we're behind the planning board surety. So if we foreclose, we foreclose subject to that surety.
And can you, for the purposes of this. Project, the surety envisioned would be any of the. Roadway infrastructure?
Yes.
Uh, and the repaving of Salem Street to accommodate the installation of your. Underground, you know, underground sewer water, etc.
Yep. Yep.
We don't have a surety on, we don't have a surety on Timberwood Circle cuz that's private.
No, correct. Yep. Yep, but they'll be sure the the what will happen here is we'll probably put a conditional approval contract, which is that your your Form G at the beginning. Which basically says, you know, we can't sell any lots or sell anything in the subdivision until the subdivision's entirely completed. We'll probably start work and then we'll have the, we'll work with the town engineer to put together a. Estimate, and then we'll go to a bank or put up cash to bond the rest of it.
Okay.
And switch the surety. Um, number three, construction of the subdivision shall be in accordance with the plan, that being the subdivision plan in the town of Wakefield's Department of Public Works standards. In all work performed thereon, including but not limited to roadway infrastructure, anything associated with and in compliance with uh in conformance with the following conditions. A, the applicant should be responsible for any damage caused to Salem Street and other streets or ways within the town of Wakefield by the applicant's construction activities. Including but not limited to trucking on and off-site. Salem Street should be kept clean and swept at all times during construction of the subdivision. So this is a typical condition you've put on. That if there's any damage done to the abutting streets by contractors coming in and out, it has to be repaired. Uh, and the streets need to be swept regularly and kept clean. Um, B, prior to any paving on site. The applicant should provide a progress as-built submittal to the Public Works Engineering Division for review and approval. The submittal shall include a PDF and CAD plan depicting final size, location, and rim invert elevations of all drainage, sewer. Water, roadway, gas, and electric electric infrastructure. This plan shall also include. The final as-built volume of any stormwater detention, retention, infiltration systems on site. A letter prepared by a professional engineer noting any changes between the finalized bill conditions and the approved uh site plan and stormwater report. The letter shall also include a statement stating all work, uh, all site work has been completed within substantial compliance of the approved site plan and drainage report. Um, so that is a request that they have because if they want that before paving, because if there's any problems, they don't want paving to cover it. So that's kind of a new condition that they've come up with, you know, learning in the past. And then C, prior to the request for final surety release, the whole release, the applicant should provide a final as-bits built submittal to the public works for review and approval. And that pretty much matches. That's that's when the whole subdivision is complete. Uh, D, prior to final uh release of surety, the applicant should provide a street acceptance plan to the board in both My Law and digital format. Street acceptance plan should be drafted in correct readable and professional manner in a format compatible with the DPW CAD system and digital base map. All plans should utilize the horizontal datum of Massachusetts State Plane Coordinate Systems, NAD eighty-three. And Massachusetts Register Professional Land Survey shall certify the street acceptance plan. So the board always wants that in your file if town meeting decides to make it a public way. So there's no expense to the town to do that. Hopefully it will become one.
So this, so that's basically the street acceptance plan is if the town were in the future to decide to accept it. At a town meeting, that 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 documentation is essentially there to be plucked from the file?
Yes.
Gotcha.
At at the applicant's expense, not the town's.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, four, uh, the applicant in order contracted during the construction of the subdivision shall comply with the Williamson Sparages Owen M. Plan. So that's the, you know, there's an Owen M. Plan attached to the stormwater report. And during construction, we have to comply with all construction components while it's being built. Post-construction inspections, maintenance, indoor repairs of the stormwater management system component shown on the plan in any all costs, in any. In all costs associated there with with shall be the joint and several responsibility of the owners of the subdivision lots as shown on the plan. Hereafter collectively referred to as lot owners and a homeowners association for the subdivision. And I'll get to that in a minute. The inspection, maintenance, and repair shall occur as called for and specified by the Williamson Sparages Owen M. Plan. And or is are necessary to keep the system operating as designed. All post-construction inspections, maintenance, indoor repairs of the stormwater management system component shown on the plan. Is called for in the Williamson Sparages Owen M. Plan and or is necessary to keep the system operating as designed shall be documented and reported to the DPW. If at any time in the opinion of the DPW, the lot owners in homeowners association fail to comply with the requirements stated herein. Then the town or its agents indoor designees shall have the right to enter upon the subdivision land and perform inspections. Maintenance and or repairs as they may deem appropriate to the satisfaction of the DPW. In such an uh such an event within thirty days, notice. From the DPW, the lot owners and the homeowners association shall reimburse the town any funds so expended. Including the imputed value of any DPW labor involved to the satisfaction of the DPW. For which amount? for which amounts said lot owners and homeowners association shall be jointly and severally liable. The town shall have a cause of action for damages for such sum against the lot owners and the homeowners association. And in any such action shall be entitled to recover the reasonable value of its attorney's time and any expenses or costs incurred therein for which the lot owners and homeowners association shall be jointly and severally liable. Furthermore, the town shall also have a cause of action and equity against the lot owners and homeowners association to enforce their compliance with the requirements of this condition. And in any such action shall be entitled to recover the reasonable value of its attorney's time and any expenses or costs incurred therein for which the loan, lot owners and homeowners association shall be jointly and severally liable. The applicant shall present a separate document such as a supplemental restrictive covenant easement in agreement, restating the requirements of this condition for recording at Middlesex Self-Regulatory Deeds when the endorsed Mylar plan is recorded and it shall be superior entitled to any mortgages relating to land in the subdivision. And a copy shall be presented to the board. So this is kind of what Mr. Spalding was talking about, that when people don't do things, this is pretty strong. So you're saying you've got to maintain and inspect all of the stormwater here. And the reason I put that the lot owners, you know, as I've mentioned, we're going to have a homeowners association that's going to do all this. The lot owners are going to be members. But the planning board just doesn't want to be able to go after a homeowners association because they're kind of an abstract entity, right? They might not have assets. So the way Tom Mullen and I have designed this in the past, we're saying that you can go after the, the lot owners, any one of them for this, all of them, and or the homeowners association. So everybody's on the hook. Nobody can duck it. And it's a pretty big hammer for the board and that, and that's why the language of jointly and severally liable for all of these costs and expenses means that you can go after one, you can go after all. It's, it's up to you on how you want to pursue it. And then I have that requirement.
Before we move on, so and this is where I'd be looking to Mr. Spalding. Have, have we, is this consistent with what we've executed in the past as it relates to having a, an enforcement mechanism for lack of a better term?
Kind of. We've, when we restructured our subdivision, A and R stuff and really specifically, this is what we want to see on the drawings, this is what we want to see. A and Rs are a little bit different, but with the subdivision side, we've been able to really and Matt, myself, a few, Theo, a long time to really make sure we had everything that we wanted to see on the plans. But when it comes to paragraphs like this with a lot of O and M plans and DPW and thirty days after this and Mylar and CAD and as built, there's a lot of good information in here. I think this is more developed and more strict than others I've seen. Thank you, Attorney McGrath. I think part of our board's responsibility is during these public open meetings, whatever it might be, but to really listen to what a lot of the abutters are concerned about and turn that into what we see in front of us here. And then, of course, is the part with engineering and review and all that too. So Jim, just to answer your question, I think, yes, this is exactly what we're looking for. But when it comes down to it for enforcement and we're standing there shaking some papers and asking that homeowners or association to change something and we don't have any financial side to pull, say if the project is completed or if it's not an engineering issue, when it is an engineering issue or a building or safety issue, it's really easy to get the town involved and it gets taken care of. But we ran into issues Attorney McGrath, you remember Gates of Greenwood? I mean, that went back and forth. That was like four or five years, just trying to get some things done that seemed so simple that were in the drawings that we just couldn't get done. So I don't know. I think, Jim, this is great to have, but when it comes down to it and we're shaking papers and saying you were supposed to do this, why isn't this done? I, I feel like we don't have a lot of enforcement when it comes down to non-engineering safety issues. And, and this covers it well, but if we have snow removal signs, for example, but the snow is still being pushed with the salt combined into conservation land or pushed over into other people's property, it's really hard to enforce that. That's a really good example because it happens all the time. I don't know. Did I, did I answer your question in that rant?
I think you did. I mean, I think that the basically in terms of what we typically do, this is on the stricter end, but you know, to set expectations as it relates to what's enforceable and what has been a challenge in the past.
Yeah, I think a lot of times we become the eyes and the ears. The really good example was Kevin tonight and previously with trees and previously with other things with drainage and all that. But we really, when we hear from the abutters and a letter goes or somebody talks to Marissa at, at town level or Erin, and that's when we hear from it, we can go out and walk. What a lot of this helps too is at any time we can go out to the site with notice and take pictures and, and make sure that we are communicating. And again, I think the first thing we do is we write a letter. The next thing we do is contact who we need to for enforcement. But when it comes down to planting and a butter issues for fences and different things like that, it's really hard for us to work that way. If you, another example, just to bring up over in Prospect on Claude there, we, we met with the butter in the back and the owners have been awesome, the builders are amazing and they worked it out. Like we got on site and we really just facilitated what was going on. And I can't remember who else was there. It was me and Matt. Jim, I can't remember if you were there or Theo, but we walked the site. There was some abrevities that were dying and the contractor was like, yeah, we'll take care of it. Not a problem. So I think we have worked this out in conversations, in person at the site, even after construction's completed. But this type of verbiage really helps.
Well, I've worked on this language, Mr. Chair, with town council over the years. Basically, you know, the key components here are that everybody's on the hook. And everybody's, you know, also responsible for attorney's fees and imputed value. So if, if they're not maintaining the drainage system the way they are, it's simply a letter from the DPW that says, hey, guys, guess what? You haven't done it. So this gives a number of options. The DPW could go in and do the work and bill for it if they wanted to. It also has a component at the bottom where it says, furthermore, the town shall also have a cause of action and equity. So town council could go to, go to court enforce them to do it, get a court order. And the best, the best leverage that the town has is when you send the letter saying you haven't done this and you're going to do it. Oh, by the way, if, if, if we do it and we go and you don't pay us and we go to court, you've got to pay our attorney's fees. And if we bring a cause of action to force you to do it, we're going to win because it can't be any clearer than this. And you're going to have to pay our attorney's fees. They're going to do it. And Bill, and that's why we, I also provision that we have another document that memorializes this, so it's not buried in a, in a decision. So that document will be recorded and then will also be referenced right in their deeds. So, you know, they can't say, oh geez, I didn't know about that. That was just in a, in a decision, you know, I, I had no idea that that was it. And whether they do or they don't, they're bound by it, but, but it's going to be felt and suspended with another document that's going to be on record specifically talking about this.
Because it's also tied to their deeds, so it's a little bit more.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a little more in your face for lack of a better term.
And we're going to set them up properly with the subdivision with the HOA. You know, as I mentioned, everybody will be members of it. They'll be contributing. There'll be money to do it. And you know, it, it, it's worked. And Bill, just to remind you, there was one, I think it was on either Grace Court or Stony Hill that we had a condition on no walls because there was a site issue.
Yeah.
And the people built a wall. Do you remember that?
Yep. Yeah, I think it was on Grace. Yeah, I do remember that.
And, and the planning board had this in a covenant and council wrote a letter. They had to, they took it down. They had to.
Yeah.
They didn't have a choice.
Yeah, Mr. Mullen has helped us understand a lot. And it's, it's, it's good to understand that part too. And Theo, to your point earlier, when we're discussing items not anticipated, there is always going to be something that we need to rely on. Attorney, Town Council Mullen or Attorney McGrath to help really understand some of these pieces. Some of the words are tricky to understand. Even if we feel like it's right, if any of us on the board feel like there's something in there, it just doesn't sound right, it's yeah, Tom Mullen has been so helpful in the past.
Yeah, this is a lot. This language is kind of from Tom's library from prior.
You know, it's funny, Attorney McGrath, I can kind of hear it.
We want it tight too. We really do.
Yeah.
You know, you know, my client, as you know, he's, he's, this has been going on for a while. He's doing, operating in great faith with the board and and I'm before the board all the time. So the last thing I want is a phone call saying, hey, you guys promised this and now we can't do it because it doesn't reflect well on my client and it doesn't reflect well on me. So, so we try to make the language tight that people are going to, you know, live up to it because we've made that commitment.
You know, I was going to say it's funny, but when I do read the stuff, I can, I could almost hear Tom Mullen's voice as I read it. Thank you.
Okay. I want, one question to this point. Failure to abide by a senior's restricted covenant, is that cause for default of a mortgage that's junior to it?
If a private owner, Theo?
Yeah.
Like if I have a mortgage on my house, if I don't do it, am I in default on my mortgage?
Yeah.
No. No.
It might give the lender cause for concern because Judge.
To be honest with you, most lenders aren't even going to know about it and care. Until they foreclose and they were on the hook.
Okay. Do you want to move on to the next one or does anyone else have anything you want to bring up?
I, one other comment to the is there a final draft or a version of the restrictive covenant that we get to see or approve or?
Yep, right here. The applicant shall present a separate document. So I'll present that to the board and usually what I do is I go through town council. Yeah.
And when, when does that happen?
That happens, that, that will happen when we record the Mylar plan. So it says, it says for recording Middlesex Self-Regulatory Deeds when the endorsed Mylar plan is recorded. So what we do is there, we recorded everything together in a bundle. The Form G, the Mylar plan and in all of these, the decision and all, any, any of the covenants that go with it.
Okay. I think let's motor on.
Okay. So five, and this was this, we just put a copy of the Williams Project on an implant. It'll also be attached to the homeowners association document. Because that's going to be requirement of the HOA. So we'll just attach it just to get, to, to get that on record, that O and M plan. So, so people can find it. You know, we, that way it'll be on record at the registry of deeds, what this O and M plan for the drainage is versus people saying, well, I don't know what it is. It's buried in town hall with, you know, somebody lost it. We don't know what it is. We can't find it. It'll be right on record at the registry. Okay, six, the landscaping in the subdivision, you know, as you know, we've presented a very, you know, detailed plan that, you know, everybody's looked at and liked, you know, your board, the neighbors. So we're committing to do that. So the landscaping in the subdivision shall be installed and maintained as shown on the landscaping plan. The maintenance, repair and replacement of the landscaping is shown on the landscaping plan and any all costs associated there with, with shall be joint and several, the joint and several responsibility of the lot owners in the homeowners association. So same thing as above. If at any time in the opinion of the board, your board, there is a failure to comply with the requirements of this condition, the town shall have a cause of action for a specific performance against the lot owners on the homeowners to enforce the requirements of this condition and any such action. So be entitled to recover the reasonable value of its attorney's time and expenses or costs incurred therein for which the law owners and homeowners association shall be jointly and severally liable. And again, the applicant should present a separate document such as a supplemental restrictive covenant in agreement, restating the requirements of this condition for recording at Middlesex Self-Regulatory Deeds, et cetera. So the difference from this one above than above, we're not, the one above, we talk about giving the DPW rights to go in and deal with the drainage. We're not anticipating that anyone's going to go into the subdivision from the town and do landscaping. I think the simple procedure here would be, would be a letter, you're not in compliance. And if, if you don't come into compliance, we're going to sue you to force you to it, to do it, and you're going to pay our attorney's fees. I, I, I took the liberty. I just think it was practical to say the town's going to go in and start planting shrubs. It's just not going to happen, right?
Agreed.
But I think the town might, if there's a big drainage problem on the site, the town might say to the DPW, this is impacting people. We need you to go on an emergency basis and get in there and fix the drainage. We good on so far?
Yep.
Going to the next. Okay. So lot, one and four shown on the plan is subject to a condition that other than what is shown on the landscaping plan, nothing may be planted, built, constructed, parked or placed in the area designated on the plan is five foot low planting zone. This is for the site distance out on Salem Street. If at any time the owner of Lot one or Lot four fails to comply with the terms of this condition, then the town or its agents in or designate shall have the right to enter upon either lot to do such work or remove objects as it, as it may deem appropriate, so as to make said lot in compliance with this condition. In such event, within thirty days after notice, the town, from the town, the applicable lot owner, because it's going to be one or the other, not everybody in this circumstance, shall reimburse the town any funds so expended, including the imputed value of any DPW labor involved to the satisfaction of the DPW. The town shall have a cause of action and damages for such sum against the applicable lot owner in, in any such action shall be entitled to recover reasonable attorney's fees and time and expense or costs incurred therein from the applicable lot owner. Furthermore, the town shall also have a cause of action and equity to enforce the provisions of this condition against the owner of Lot one or Lot four. And in such action shall be entitled to recover reasonable value of its attorney's time and expenses across incurred therein from the applicable lot owner. And this is also going to have a covenant or document recorded, recording, memorializing it. And in this one, we did give the town access rights because if somebody plants a tree there and it's dangerous, you might want the ability to send the DPW right out there to get rid of it.
And where is that? I'm looking at the, the landscaping plans and I don't see that.
I'll show you. Let me stop this.
Because my recollection is this is tied to the, the previous attempts to redevelop this property where it was unsuccessful because of lack of control over that specific sight line.
It was, this is more kind of a belt and suspenders from TAC. What, what the original issue was, was there was a tree that we got, we're getting rid of. But TAC talked about this. Let me find it here. Hold on. Here we go. This is in the subdivision plan. And I referenced what it was called. See this area marked five foot low planting zone? Right here? Can you see that? Jim, you're, you're.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's on that side of the street coming in. And then, so that's on Lot four. And then it's also carries over to one right here. So our landscaping plan accounts for this. And, you know, and that's why it's got to be maintained.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to bring back up the conditions. So number eight is really the INI fee. And you know, what it says is that's the inflow infiltration fee per bedroom. The applicant shall submit the INI fee to DPW prior to the building permit approval. So any building permit, that's when they want it.
Any members of the board have any questions related to the INI fee?
No, I got, I got, let me see, this, this carried over. This is going to be fixed. I apologize because it's conflicting language in here. What the town requires is this INI fee has to be paid prior to the endorsement of the Mylar as stated up here. And, and this is conflicting language that talks about prior to, prior to the building permit. That will be if it was just a house. So there was conflicting language with the DPW. So this has to come out the bottom. The town wants the money when the, when the, when the, when the Mylar is endorsed.
Because so instead of the building permit.
Yeah, that, that will be if it was, you know, if it was, if it was. Yeah, that, that will be if it was, you know, if it was, um, if it was like just a multifamily type building.
Gotcha.
So for the benefit of the town, that, that great, great paragraph, uh, has to be deleted. Do that now. Okay. Okay. Number nine, prior to commencing construction of the subdivision, the applicant's contract will be required to file a right of way utility permit. Um, uh, with the engineering division, pay all associated costs included, not limited to roadway utility inspection fees. Water main tapping fee, sewer connection fee and sewer I N I fee. So the good news is, a lot of that, you know, that's a standard condition that the DPW wants, but a lot of that work has already been done because my, you know, my client did all the utility work in Salem Street before they paved the roadway. So the, the great news is we, we do not have to open up Salem Street. Uh, number ten, the applicant must comply with, uh, any and all notes in or conditions stated on the plan itself. This number eleven goes back, this, this is like an old Paul Reavis, um, Bill, you probably remember this, um, you know, as you know, our. Rich Williams has proposed dwellings on the lots. Um, that he utilized, um, you know, for drainage calculations. So. You know, those are just boxes. So people, when they decide what they wanna build on, on, not, not where the, uh, uh, townhouses are going, but on the, on the houses, they might change shape, et cetera. So this just says. The proposed dwelling shown on the lots, uh, on lots on the plan for illustrated purposes only. The dimensions and locations of the proposed dwellings may vary as long as they meet zoning setback requirements. And as long as the square footage of the foundation footprint for the dwelling is the same or less than that of the proposed dwelling shown on the plan. This condition does not preclude deck swimming pools or accessory structures such as a shed or a garage. Is there a law, by the way, fail zoning by law or relief granted pursuant thereto? So. We just have had situations before where people have said, oh, you know, y- y- you agreed, that's where you're gonna build that shape and you have to live with it and it doesn't work. So. Number twelve, um, the board, your board and DPW along with their employees and consultants shall have access to all property included in the subdivision for inspection purposes after reasonable notice when accompanied by the applicant. Or the applicant's agents until the board has completely released any and all surety, which is required in condition number one of the decision. So during construction, your board wants to get on site to find out what's going on. You have a right to go on site.
It's a question on this one, if you don't mind. Um, with. Until the board has completed, released any and all. So what happens after?
Well, you, I mean, at that point, you know, your, you know, the town has rights to go on for the reasons that we stated above, you know, drainage maintenance and, you know. The, the easement, uh, the, um, uh, the five foot low plant zone and stuff like that, but you know, you're not gonna have a right to go on private property after that point. There won't be a need to. I mean, if you release surety, the subdivision's done, it's over. And then it's just those maintenance areas that we just talked about. You okay with that, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we have, we have gone on to site after construction cert. He's been. All taken care of, um, with notice, reasonable notice. Um, I've always felt that this one. Really shouldn't be there. I mean, yes, we understand it's private property. It's private property now. Um, so. I just feel like that doesn't need to be there. So you, you, you think that it should be removed whole cloth? Um, I feel like the sentence can just end. Um. After or the applicant's agent, period. I don't think it needs to be until the board has completely released any and all surety, which is required in condition number one of this decision. I just think it stops there. I mean, it's, it's still private property. Right now, it will be later as well. But I feel like with reasonable notice that if there are complaints by abutters that we should be able to, the DP, DPW should be able to go. On the property with reasonable notice to review anything in this document that is not being followed. Or on the, on the landscape plan or whatever. We've done it at Montrose School Lane, um, Attorney McGrath. I mean, this is something, but it's, I feel like it should end right at agent.
Um, I mean. Nick, you okay with that? I really don't have a major issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna say a major issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't. Uh, there's no bad intent here. I mean, I don't think the, you, my property unless you have to, so.
Not at all. Yeah.
So if the board's okay with Mr. Spalding's request or in sync with him, we're, we're fine with that.
Anyone else have any objection? Okay.
Bill, you good with that change I just made?
Yes, it's perfect.
Great. Okay, thirteen, prior to endorsement of My Law Plan by the board, the applicant should provide electronic files in portable document format, PDF of all final plans and documents. Covenants, utility easements, O and M plan and the final drainage study. Draft homeowners association submitted for review. We'll give you a copy of that. Additionally, the applicant should provide a full set of plans on a computer disk in CAD format compatible with the town of Wakefield. CAD systems and digital base map. And that's, that's a requirement of your. You know, we just cite the, um, section of your rules and regs. Fourteen, seven days prior to the endorsement of the My Law Plan by the, the applicant should provide two complete sets of the My Laws or wet seals of the engineer certificate for review by the board. Um, you, you know, you're gonna wanna see that to make sure. Do you think it complies? The board shall determine whether the plans are consistent with the approvals given. After endorsement, the board shall retain one set of My Laws. And transmit the same to the engineering department for as, uh, for, for as a record set of the plan approved. So the town always wants two My Laws, one for your files and one that will be recorded at the registry. Town engineering department, always number fifteen, the applicant is required to hire at their expense an environmental monitor to provide. Review of the construction phase sedimentation control. The E M shall be approved by the DPW based on experience and shall provide the engineering division. With periodic inspection reports at frequencies outlined within the approved storm water pollution protection plan.
Attorney McGrath, this, this environmental monitor, i- is that essentially like a, um. Like a soil test? Or a series of soil tests?
No, it's more that, you know, we, we have to, you know, we have, we're gonna have requirements under the storm water pollution protection plan not to, you know, to protect the wetlands to. Um, uh, to mitigate runoff, uh, during construction and.
It's testing of the water quality essentially?
It's, it, well, Rich, do you wanna elaborate on?
Yeah, I, I can, uh, chime in a bit here. Um, we do these inspections a lot for subdivision such as this. What it entails is going out to the site during construction, making sure that the, um. Protections that are put in place, like, for instance, the, the tracking pad, making sure dirt isn't being tracked out onto the pavement. Making sure that, uh, siltation isn't getting to the wetlands and. Um, that, that stockpiles are protected, um, during storm events and things like that.
So it's like a third party construction monitoring for, for lack of a better term of the.
Correct.
Environmental policies and contained with this web.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And that's a, you know, that's one of the ones that was copied and pasted from your DPW correspondence that they want.
Yep.
Okay, sixteen, the town, uh, the applicant shall offer and if accepted, provide a $5,000 contribution on town of Wakefield with use towards townwide signal improvements and infrastructure required due to cumulative impacts associated with this project and other. Growth in the area. Such contribution, if accepted, shall be made prior to the issuance of any building permit on site.
I think that was also a copy paste from a DPW, right?
It was, yeah. Seventeen, at town of Wakefield, chapter one fifty-four, section six, governing construction hours and noise shall also apply to any, um, in all work on or within the subdivision. So that's our noise by law, like no work on Sundays, et cetera, limit on hours. Eighteen, the applicant should provide the board zoning enforcement office, a police department, fire department, department of public works with a list of contact persons within their respective. Um, entities to whom enforcement issues may be addressed. So we always, you know, keep them, the superintendent on site, contact, cell phone, et cetera, if there's any problems. Um, nineteen, no second water service or meter dedicated to outside irrigation systems will be allowed for any dwelling unit in the subdivision, which is, um. You know, a standard, that's a condition that they require, uh, the DPW. Uh, twenty, no case shall storm water, groundwater or sump pump discharge be permitted to enter the sanitary sewer system? Again, another requirement of theirs. Um, number twenty-one, the project is required to develop a storm water pollution prevention plan. A drafts, uh, SWIP shall be provided to DPW for review and approval prior to endorsement of the My Law Plan. Rich, you haven't done that yet, right? That will be prior to endorsement of My Law, the SWIP.
Um, we can't do the SWIP until we get our order of conditions. So, um. Get the order of conditions. We, we filed a, um. The permit with the EPA and then once that permit comes back from the EPA, which usually takes about a week, we can put the SWIP together.
Got it. Yep. So that's gonna be approved by DPW. Twenty-two, proposed new lots one, two and four on the plan will be provided municipal trash and recycle pickup. When the subdivision is completed, the DPW will not provide refuse of recycling pickup. And disposal service for the units on lot three on the plan. That's the, uh, townhouses. That was a condition that they requested. And that's it.
Did you, and I, I'm just looking at the, uh. The DPW letter, um, did, was there one related to the right of way utility permit?
Yes.
Did we go through that?
I think we hit it. Uh, hold on. Just a chair. Let me see. I know we did. Just gotta find. Let me do this.
Oh, is it, uh, condition nine?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Utility permit. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, please go through it. I think I got them all.
Do any other members of the board have any other comments or items that they'd like to talk about as it relates to the subdivision?
Uh, for number seventeen, Attorney McGrath.
Yep.
Uh, I was just trying to go through quickly and find it. I wanted to make sure with the, uh, zoning recodification that the chapter and section. Are accurate with the new, because I know some of those numbers changed. So just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, that's good. That, yeah, that's a good point, but that's, uh, so I don't think, um, Kevin, I don't think you guys changed. So this is not part of the, um, the noise by law.
It's not part of chapter one ninety, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I know we did, we did look at some. Outside of one ninety, so you might wanna just verify.
Yeah, give me a second. Yeah, I'll be, I'll, I'll just make a note, just so I'm not wasting everybody's time. That's a good point. I'm just gonna make a note, confirm. Um, confirm site. Okay, got it.
Any other comments or concerns from the other members of the board? I'm trying, I don't think, um, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Spalling.
No, I just have one comment. It's just more about the landscaping plan. And, um, I think that's, you know, as a board, that's probably our most important. Um, and this is great to read through all these, but as it references to the landscape plan, as we do review the My Laws and, and moving forward, we just really have to make sure that's what. What we agreed upon is, is on there. But I do appreciate all the work put into this covenant. It's really helpful. Thanks.
I think the one other thing I wanted to raise my hand, just because we've been talking about one ninety-seven, a decent amount. I don't think this, this project, we have any, uh, any specific standalone trees that we're. Concerned about, but there are trees at the, at the perimeter of the site. Is there anything that the, are there any specific trees that the board is concerned about? That we wanna have any language on, or is, is everyone feel comfortable where we are right now? I feel like that there isn't. A specific tree that is of special interest, for lack of a better term. Okay, so I guess in that case, hearing, hearing nothing, it just means that just make sure we follow the limited work line when we're actually doing the construction and we'll be okay.
Rich, you okay with that?
Oh, sorry, I'm not talking about adding it.
Yeah, yeah, it's no problem. Um.
But you, you know that, Rich.
I'm, I'm sure that the, uh, conservation commission in their order of conditions is gonna have us, um. Stake the limit of work, uh, prior to construction, have them inspected. That it's almost always what, uh, in their order. So. Yep, we'll do that and, um, it, it will have to be where it's proposed because at the end, we've gotta do a. Uh, certificate of compliance proving that we didn't go beyond that twenty-five feet.
And then, I, and anything else on the conditions before we potentially move over to? Any of the other elements? Okay, uh, not seeing any more. I think from, from my perspective. Um, I think that those, those seem reasonable as long as we make those handful of revisions. And then the only other thing I wanna make sure that we talked about before we, um, before we move on is. Incorrectly from wrong, Attorney McGrath, I believe that the list of requested waivers on the actual subdivision. Those are on that list that we've reviewed as a group previously and there's, there has not been any and they're not anticipated to be any changes to that list of waivers?
I'm gonna let Richard address that.
Yeah, that's correct. I went through them and they're all still valid. I mean, um, a bunch of them are, are. You know, like you guys were talking about. Seem to be things that, uh, maybe w- wanna be changed in the, uh, in the regulations, but they are necessary. Um, you know, for this set of plans.
But there, there, nothing, nothing's changed since, I mean, because we went through it, oh, God, must have been months.
Yeah, no, nothing has changed.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so in that case, uh, I'm assuming that what. I, I, I'm assuming Attorney McGrath, that this is kinda given what you, what you were looking for. If you put together a draft decision with the conditions as, as reviewed tonight. That we could review and potentially take action on December ninth, that would be the. The next step, or is there anything else that you wanna review? Or so you said something about mailbox?
Yes, I wanna go over that with the board, uh, if I could, um. We, one of the things this zoning board asked us to look at with the, um. With the townhouses was, you know, what's a mail, what's a mail gonna do, um, with that as far as, you know, is it gonna have to be a, a box for that mail or, you know, they go to individual units and. So, you know, as you know, Mr. Leo, my client on this has been very proactive for the whole thing. So we actually went down and met with the postmaster. Um, as he, as he took on the streetlight issue as well, um, and. Uh, he found out that they will not even, they won't even deliver to the individual houses on new subdivisions now. So, so we have to have a mailbox for the entire project, you know, the houses and the townhouses. So we, we worked with the Z B A on what would be appropriate and certainly your board has some say on that as well. Um, and what we're proposing, um, and this was fine with the Z B A, is. This was the, the fanciest mailbox that, uh, Nick was able to find. You know, not one of these, you know, the, kind of the, the typical mailboxes you see are those aluminum things that, you know, really aren't too attractive. And, and so this is, this is, you know, a black finish, um, heavy duty, um. With engraving and, you know, it's got some texture to it and it's got enough slots, um, to deal with. And so that's, that's the style, and now I'll show you where we're proposing to put it.
That's for the single family homes too, right?
Yeah, it is, Le, uh, Theo, they will not, they won't, they won't deliver to them. So, we thought this was the most appropriate location, right here. Because what it does is it gets people off of Salem Street, they're not stopping as they're coming in, you know, to get out of their cars would be dangerous. The sidewalk is over here, so we didn't want to interfere with that. This way, people that are coming into the townhouse can just pull over and get out. And people from the houses can either walk down and on nice days, or if it's, you know, winter time, they can do the same and then just go back. It just seemed like the most appropriate and the, and the ZBA was fine with this location. They, they vetted it and they talked about over here. Um, but they didn't like how it wouldn't interfere with the sidewalk over here, so that's the location we came up with.
So, quick question, Attorney McGrath, was this, the ZBA asked for it, um, is it something that the USPS needs to approve?
Uh, Nick, maybe you can elaborate on that, since you've, uh, had, um, detailed, uh.
Yeah, so I, I was actually even talking to them today, um. So they are, they do have to do a final approval of the mailbox location. From everything they've looked at so far, they don't anticipate any problems. Uh, they have approved the mailbox. The only change was it's the same size, but it has to basically have two parcel lockers. So there's another version that basically incorporates all that into that same sized box, but it'll all look the same from the outside. But from everything they've, uh, said so far, they, they seem okay with this location, just to wait in the final.
That's good to know. Uh, the reason I bring it up is I ran into this in a project years ago. And is it, should we look at also an alternative, a second best location, just in case? The USPS says, no, that's not the right, our truck's not gonna pull on that corner and deliver it. Is, do you wanna look at a second location that would be like the second best just in case scenario? So we don't have to go through and review and approve again?
Yeah, I'm certainly open to that. If you guys have any suggestions.
Did that come up as like another option, like where else you think this might fit well?
I mean, I kind of like that whole side on the right over there, uh, just because. It's gonna be up against the road where the mail truck can kind of pull up and not necessarily even have to, to get out, because they're on the right side. So I would kind of suggest any, anywhere up on the circle.
Anywhere in here.
Yeah, so maybe that is the other option. It's like, this is the ideal location.
Yeah.
Um, but anywhere from tree to tree. I guess, yeah.
Yeah, originally I was thinking more towards, uh. Basically the start of the bend, but then I ended up moving it up there. I figured it would be nicer next to the light, in case people are kind of getting their mail at nighttime. They'll have a little.
That's true too, yeah.
So that's how it kind of got moved over there.
Good catch. Okay, that's all. I just, I know sometimes it's like, we don't want to have to come back again and like review another location if they. Don't like this one for some reason.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
To that question, no, no discussion about separate. Uh, a separate mailbox for the, the five single family homes versus the, the condos?
Uh, everything so far, um, they seem to be okay with one, one centralized mailbox for everybody.
I don't think they'll make, I don't think they like to make two stops, Theo, you know, they're, they're not.
Yeah, no, no, fair enough. I also just sort of wondering a little bit about like the. You know, single families, you know, owners versus the, the condo, but it's all one homeowners association also, so.
Didn't they say, Nick, they would take packages to the units and houses?
Yeah, that's, that was one of the things I said. I'm like, I think I'm just gonna leave all the Amazon packages in the street for everybody. And they said that, uh, the bigger packages, they will take to the door, but. See if they really do that or not.
So at this point, I think, do you, you don't need anything formally from us, right?
No, no, you just see that on the plan. We'll make a note of it, you know, on the, you know, those are kind of the final edits that we need to make on the plan.
And honestly, to, to Bill's point, if you say mailbox between those two points to be coordinated with.
Yeah.
With carrier service.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, just so long as we're, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think it's more important for you guys to be able to have the flexibility to, to do it without coming back.
Appreciate that. Rich, can you do that? Can you just make a note on the final plan set on, you know, the general area of the mailbox location?
Yep, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I think there was another, uh, item that you want to talk, uh, was it the, um. Just landscaping?
No, dude, I mean, i- i- it really doesn't, it's not, it, we're gonna, landscaping plan. Rich, we're gonna have to incorporate the landscaping plan into our plan set with the planning board. Are you okay with that, Rich?
Yes.
You know, you'll have to get work with Bill Fleming to do that.
Yep.
You all right with that? There's a hesitation there.
Yeah, it's hesitation because it's a. I- is it being recorded at the registry?
I'd like to, we can, um.
Okay, so it does not, like you, you know, there's criteria for that. That is not currently on those plans, so the plans would have to be amended. But we can do it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, it's the only thing that's gonna document, um. What's referenced, you know, you know, we, we've dealt with this before, that if it's not recorded, then people can't find it, you know, and ten years go by and they don't know where to find it.
Good.
Okay, anything else that, um. That we talk about before we. I think probably continue to the December ninth meeting?
Just an extension of time till the, into January, which we're not gonna need, but just in case.
And then the extension of time, that was something that we need to vote on it to request, and then.
Yeah.
A letter to you?
Uh, yeah, I'll do a, a letter to the town clerk and work through Marissa on that. I'll send a letter confirming that we've requested the extension of time. You've agreed to it and then we'll, we'll clock in it at the town clerk's office.
So I know extension time, we have to request it and then you agree to it?
Um, no, I'm getting a brain cramp.
Because it's, because if we don't request the extension of time, then we, we deem approved?
If, if, if we don't extend the time, then it's a constructive approval, so, so that's, let me just see here, hold on. Right now.
I think it's the same whether we, we request it, um, or you've requested and we grant it. I think it's the same.
Yeah, we request it, we're requesting it, um, that's where we, it, it's done under the statute. And you agree to extend the time.
Okay.
So, so, you know, so I'll send you a letter, um, confirming on behalf of my clients that they've requested. Um, that the planning board agree to extend the time for the planning board to take final action. What to file with the town clerk, a certificate of the action until Ja, you know, January thirtieth.
In that case, I think that we, we probably need to vote to authorize myself to execute that letter on behalf of the board.
Correct, yeah, and then I'll provide you an extension, noted, a notice of extension that gets re- recorded. Serves notice for the, for everybody in the world that the time for the plane would to take action. Uh, has been extended until and including, uh, January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
So in that case, do, does anyone want to make a motion on the planning board to authorize? Uh, Jim Hogan to sign, uh, him on behalf of the planning board to. And agree upon an extension of time to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision?
Uh, so moved with one comment, I would say Chair, Chair, uh, Chairperson Jim Hogan and not. Or just Chair Jim Hogan and just not Jim Hogan.
Yeah, and just point of audit, uh, two thousand twenty-six, not twenty-one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a good one too, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, accept the point of order amendment and friendly amendment for, for Bill. Uh, and, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
So motion by Bill, seconded by Kristen, roll call vote, Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well, so motion passes, so I'm authorized to execute that letter on behalf of the board to accept the. Extension to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and then I believe we have to set the next public hearing, which I think we can just do. I don't think we need to take a roll. We do take a roll call vote, right?
Usually do, continue the public hearing, yeah.
So in that case, do I hear a motion to continue the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision? Public hearing to our regularly scheduled December ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting? So moved.
Second.
Second.
So, move by Kevin, seconded by Theo, Kristen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well, so, uh. Public hearing is continued to December ninth and we'll see you then, and, um, hopefully we'll be in a position to be able to take a vote. So, uh, Susan, we should probably put a vote anticipated on that for our agenda. So anyone else on, uh, item number three, before I move on to item number four? So in that case, item number three, one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision is closed, and we'll move on to item number four. And our plan associated with sixty-six to sixty-eight Harrison Ave. Uh, I think Attorney McGrath, I believe this one is yours as well.
It is. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, may I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is a pretty, uh, straightforward, um, in our plan, there's a old dilapidated house at sixty-six Harrison Ave. Um, let me blow this up. Um, and there's another piece of land over here where this dashed line is, so. All that's happening is, is, is there's two lots being created and this house is going to be raised. So you're gonna have a new lot C, which is twenty-three thousand, um, three hundred ninety-eight square feet, big lot. New lot D, twenty-eight thousand eight fifty-seven, both lots have over a hundred feet of frontage or more, so they meet. They meet the requirement of having frontage and Harrison Ave is a public way. Doesn't get much more simple than that.
Any members of the board have any comments? Mr. Spalding?
Um, of course I do. Um, in the lower left corner, I believe there's an easement. Is that part of this property? And I was wondering what happens with it?
No. That's the neighbor's lot.
It is the neighbor's lot, so that easement doesn't have anything to do with.
No.
Okay.
Our perimeter is right here, Bill, down.
Okay.
Over.
Yeah, am I not zoomed out enough? Let me see, okay, I see it over, it's over to the left more than I remember.
Yeah, that's, this is our boundary line here.
Okay. And I did, I was hoping to get a chance to go by this property, because I, I worked on a couple houses down off of Bay State Road, just in this area. Years ago, so I do have a question, and I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but are there any septic systems that. Are existing on this site before it went to town, water and sewer?
On this existing house?
Well, only because I, I did some projects back in the late nineties in this area, and it got caught up. Uh, because there were some existing septic systems that were just abandoned. And before anything happened, they needed to be, um, removed and capped.
Yeah, I don't, I can tell you that this house, to the best of my knowledge, is, is public water and public sewer, so. Um, but if there's an old system there, I, I don't, I wouldn't know that.
Yeah, I just, if you could. Talk to your client and just let them be aware of that. It held us up for like, if I remember right, six or eight months. Till it was just rectified, so, and then this is that. I'm not gonna say strange or weird area, but as you go down Bay State Road north in this area where this, it's. There's, there's a big mix of like old and new in this area.
So this is, this is in Greenwood, Bill?
Yeah, so it's above, but it's right off of, um.
Oh, Bay State, okay, I got it, yeah.
Bay State's one road and just north of that, you can connect to Harrison, I believe that way, that where, um, circles out.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's another Bay State Road up by the head of the lake, so that's why.
Oh, yeah, no, the, the one that's, um, different color signs, it's Melrose. And if you don't know, Wakefield beat Melrose tonight at Fenway Park in their Thanksgiving, um, football game.
Oh, it's good.
Family just got back from it. Yep. All right, thanks. Those are the only two questions I had. I wasn't sure if there was any issue with the easement and then, um, just older septic.
Any other members of the board have any comments, concerns, questions?
No, I appreciate all the, the, the lines and all the distances being measured and the, you know, um. Adhering to all the, uh, the Ps and Qs.
Yeah, this was, this was an easy review, thank you. I think, I think that checklist is bearing, bearing a lot of fruit.
Oh, let me tell you, I, 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 you should see the emails I sent to the engineers. You better read it thirty times, because I don't want to be embarrassed at the planning board meeting, so.
I think Attorney McGrath, I actually did have one more comment, I'm sorry, but it's in the notes, and I'm, if you could zoom down on the notes in the middle. There was something about a title on there. I have on chicken scratch on my notes when I looked at it quickly today. But in, in the middle bottom, I believe it's in there. This plane was prepared, there was. Uh, without the benefit of a title report, it may not reflect matters that may be contained therein.
Well, that would be if there were easements or something like that.
Okay.
I can tell you, I've done the title, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but that was just strange to see without the benefit of a title report. Does that have any ramifications in us endorsing?
No.
Okay. It, it's just something I'm, I don't remember seeing before.
It's just a C I A for the, uh, for the survey, that.
I figured so much, but I, I, again, I just don't remember seeing that like without the benefit of a title report.
Like he's saying, hey, if there's an easement on the property, you know, you know, I might not see it. I know there aren't any, but that wouldn't affect, even if there were thirty easements. It would still be in A and R plan that would be entitled to endorsement.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, so in that case, uh, do I hear a motion to endorse the. Sixty? Can you, uh, is, is it sixty, sixty-six to sixty-eight Harrison?
Yep, uh, let's see, hold on, sixty-six and sixty-eight, yep.
Yep, so do I hear a motion to, uh, endorse the sixty-six and sixty-eight Harrison Ave? And our plan as approval not required by the planning board? So moved.
Um, so, sorry, just, could you add a date in there? Into the motion?
Uh, so.
About the date of the plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, do I hear a motion to accept the sixty-six to sixty-eight Harrison Ave? Plant, plan dated nine twenty-six, twenty twenty-five as approval not required? So moved. So motion by Kevin, seconded by Kristen. Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All right, likewise. Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Spalding?
Yeah, before we go, happy Thanksgiving, um, how do we want to sign the Mylar and have that distributed over the holiday period? And, uh, Attorney McGrath, um, when are you looking to receive this? Is this something that can wait till next week, or is it something that you want, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll work through Marissa.
Okay, perfect, okay. I know with the holidays, sometimes we just want to ask those questions to make sure.
I'll get it to Marissa and then she can figure out from there. Is that okay, Marissa?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Typically, in my experience, um, it's been delivered to me in my office and people have just swung by town hall. Whenever they have the chance to sign it and then I'll let you know when all the signatures have been collected.
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Next week is mine.
And just one more comment on that too, Marissa, what we've done as well, just because of depending on your schedule too. We've done the handoff thing where it come, like I can go and sign it, then Jim lives down the street from me, he gets it and then it goes to Kevin and, and however. So whatever works better for your schedule. And however, so whatever works better for your schedule.
Sure, I mean, um. Yeah, I'm, as far as I know, next week I'm in the office, eight to four thirty, I don't think I have any engagement that's gonna. Take me outside of the office, but at any rate, if I'm not in there, Ethan, the conservation agent is in, is in there, I can. Leave it in a place that's easily visible, put Ethan in charge, there's also Aaron right next door, so there's. There's somebody.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, in that case, um, well, well, well. Once that gets delivered to Marissa, um, I I think, I think the handoff may be more. Achievable given the the holidays, but um, we can coordinate amongst ourselves. And then we'll see, we can get back to uh, Attorney McGrath sometime next week.
Yeah, I'm happy and I can help facilitate, I've done that before, that if, you know, I drop it at Mr. Spalding's house, sometimes he'll say he signed it and I'll go get it and then drop it at your house and then, you know. Leave it on the front porch and, you know, I did that with Matt Lowery a number of times, so. Whatever works for the board.
Okay.
I'm gonna drop it off at Matt's house just for the heck of it.
Yeah.
Knock on his door.
Um, okay, so in that case, any other items on that agenda item? Okay. So in that case, seeing none, I'll close item number four and circle back, so item number five, I know we hit a bunch of items not anticipated, but are there any other? Items not anticipated before we move to adjournment?
Uh, I don't know if you want to add some quick updates from me, I'm happy to um. Let you know what's been going on in the last couple weeks, I um, I was out on vacation, not last week, but um, the ten days prior to that, but um. In the, before, since our last meeting in between now, um, so we, Aaron and I are working on submitting the um. Packet to the Attorney General following town meeting, um, that is almost ready to go, but a lot of, most of the zoning stuff has. Been done and then just gotta compile the rest of the art, the paperwork for the rest of the articles that were on the warrant. Um, the housing production plan has been officially approved by the state, we got word of that at the beginning of November, so that's very exciting. Um, so like Theo said at the beginning of the meeting, uh, I think kicking things off in the new year, that'd be a great time to start talking about actually. Working toward some of those goals, um. What else? Um, as a, we teamed up regionally with uh. Reading, Woburn and Burlington to submit a grant to Mast dot. For a last mile micro transit initiative, um, I think the, if we, the idea would be to. Um, get funding to have a micro transit pilot program here in town and then in our uh, neighboring communities as well. Hopefully, um, it would work so that we would have on-demand service within Wakefield and then fixed regional routes. Um, so you know, we're all communities along the one twenty eight corridor, so you know, if. Somebody needed transport to get to the Burlington Mall or the Lahey Clinic or something like that, um. That's, that's the idea behind it, so I will keep you posted, hopefully, fingers crossed, um, that we get the funding from Mast dot. And then um, last thing, uh, Jim came in the office last week and met with myself, Aaron and Ethan, our conservation agent and. Chair Tom Lucy of the ZBA and Chair Paul, what Paul's last name, Wendell Glass? Of um, of I could be saying that wrong, but um, Paul of the Conservation Commission, so we're looking at having a a tri-chair meeting. Um, probably once a quarter, so uh, just a. How a way for the three chairs and ourselves as staff to organize, keep each other updated about. Um, what's happening before our boards, especially as we have applications that we are all um, sometimes concurrently. Reviewing like one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street, so great example as we look toward um, getting. Uh, conditions for approval solidified, it would be, you know, it it would. Behold us as a board or as Jim being the representative of the board to, you know, chat with Paul and or Tom to see what kind of conditions the ZBA and the CONCOM are looking to. Impose for approval as well, um, and so that's, that's all I have on uh, on my end.
Yep, a- a- and so one of the things coming out of that. That I wanted to provide an update to the board is the wetland bylaw, so CONCOM. Is in process of trying to finalize the revised language associated with the wetland bylaw. There's a number of changes that are anticipated to occur in order to make sure some of the comments specifically from DPW. That were, I'll say mid-flight, when it was potentially gonna go to town meeting are addressed. And so they're anticipating a Q one, specifically early Q one, twenty twenty six to come back to this board. Uh, to solicit feedback uh, prior to an anticipated spring town meeting. Uh, with the wetland bylaw would go into effect. The Conservation Commission Chair also did want to ref- uh. Noticed everyone that there are multiple vacancies on the Conservation Commission, I believe three of the seven seats are actually filled. So when any one member of the Conservation Commission is out of town, they cannot sit, so if anyone has any. Uh, anyone who's interested in being in Conservation Commission, uh, please feel free to reach out to town staff, uh, to raise your hand. Um, but that is, that's, those are two of the big ones, and then the other thing that we talked about, which Marissa, I don't know if you. Circle up with Aaron on is uh, that there was a conversation around. On a, some, some cadence to be TBD, uh, to have a uh, a series of updates that'd be developed by staff. That would go out to the individual boards, um, about what the other boards were, were. Progressing on, just for you, you kind of, I'll say a dashboard level update as it relates to what the different elements are. And I did also provide updates to the other members, the other board chairs, that the signage and some of the zoning. Planning processes are things that we've been talking about and we haven't, we're not there and ready to engage on, but there was definitely interest. From specifically the ZBA, uh, that if we were to start any of those, that they would want to be part of those efforts.
That's, that's terrific, I'm glad you guys have restarted that, like that's um. That's a a really important set of communications, and the the dashboard is really smart too.
A comment too, thanks um, Jim for sharing. Um, our board went through a similar issue where we had three members um, for a while, so. It, I I hope, I hope um, you're all appreciated and, you know, the Thanksgiving theme back again, that it's, it's, it's a lot and. I'm really glad that we do have a full board, it's so much easier to discuss and get different point of views and everything, so thank you all. Um, um, back to Marissa's comment about the micro transit, mini transit. Um, we were, I had, we had a safe streets meeting at the Americal. Um, like the week after our last meeting, and it was really cool for me to share that, like as, like that combined town, regional. And everybody was like, very, very happy to hear that, so um, I I hope so much that that goes through. And it, Marissa, I guess the question is too, is there anything as a board, as whatever that we could do, or I I I don't mind helping out? For any type of research or support for that effort?
At this point, since we've submitted the application, it um, it's just a waiting game, we um, we did get um. We did solicit letters of support from um, from Dee, our town administrator, from our senior center. Uh, from Colonial Point, one of our large residential buildings that doesn't have any, that is not located anywhere near public transit access. Um, and we solicited a joint letter from our state senator and representatives, so um. I think we had a pretty robust application and I know that our, your communities um, did the same as well. And I think the fact that we applied as a regional cohort really gives us a strong advantage, um. So I'm I'm hoping our application is well received by Mast dot, like I said, I think. At this point, it's just a waiting game, but certainly as we kick things off, I will, I will look to you guys for additional support, um, wherever. Wherever may be necessary or fit, so.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thanks, this is, this is great, can't wait. When do you think you might hear back?
I haven't the faintest idea, I would imagine, um, they didn't give us a timeline, I would have to believe sometime. After the new year, I can't imagine that much is gonna get done during the holiday season, so I would imagine sometime in the beginning of the new year. Um, I'm happy to reach out to Rachel from Mast dot, she's the coordinator. Of the grant program, um, to see if she can give a a vague idea. Or it could be very well in the slide deck that they presented back in the meeting way in October and I just missed it, so. I'll take a look and I, if anything, I'll shoot you guys an email.
Awesome. Marissa, with micro transit, would that be like on-demand transit?
Would be, yes, so within Wakefield, it would be on-demand transit, um. Excuse me, we are working with um. Circuit, they helped us prepare the application, actually Max, um, the the representative from Circuit, even though. Like if, and and Woburn as the um, municipality took the lead on this, but. So, you know, in a situation where we are awarded the grant funding, we all would have to go out for procurement and so. You know, multiple contractors for a micro transit service could bid and that's not a guarantee that Circuit is going to be the one that we choose, um. But nonetheless, they were eager to to work with us to um, get this grant together. And they already are operating in Stonem, um, Stonem a few years ago applied for. A grant, the Community Connections Grant through the Boston MPO, um, Metropolitan Planning Organization and um. And they have a highly successful micro transit program that's being operated through Circuit. Um, so it does provide on-demand service within Stonem as well as um, service to the Greenwood. Um, commuter rail station as well, and everything is done um, through a downloaded app on your phone, so. You, um, and I believe when Aaron and I were speaking with the other Aaron, Aaron Wortman, the Director of Planning and Community Development in Stonem, she was saying that. Um, Circuit operates so that no rider has to wait more than twenty minutes for their ride to show up. Um, so we are hoping to be able to provide the same service here in Wakefield as well. So like I said, fixed route ser- uh, sorry, on-demand service here in Wakefield and then hopefully we could establish some fixed routes that would connect our communities.
Yeah, great. That's really exciting.
Yeah, hoping it all works out.
Okay, does anyone else have any other items before we move to adjournment?
No.
So in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Theo, seconded by Kristen, Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. Thank you everyone for for the meeting and uh, look, ha- have a happy Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing you on the other side.